Okay, so the board is reconvening after closed session and we will redo our roll call for the public portion of the meeting.
Okay. Ms. Coyle? Here. Mr. O'Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Ms. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a number of meetings and minutes from all of the board interviews and various meetings we've had over the past couple of months, and we're going to approve them all in one motion, but I'm going to read through all of them individually, so it's kind of a long, a long motion. So, bear with me. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 16th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the first closed session of the June 16th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the second closed session of the June 16th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the July 7th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the closed session of the July 7th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the July 13th, 2020 special meeting of the Boarding, Board of Education, the minutes of the closed session of the July 13th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the July 20th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the closed session of the July 20th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the July 21st, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the closed session of the July 21st, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the July 29th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the closed session of the July 29th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education, and the minutes of the closed session of the August 4th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please. Or voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction of new staff.
And in a typical school year, we would all be at the village hall, and we would introduce our new staff, and they would be physically present, and we could all welcome to the district. So I do have pictures of all of our new staff, so we'll introduce them to the community this way. This is how we did our opening institute as well. I recorded the welcome to the district and then also introduced our new staff in the same way. So these are our new staff joining 201 this year. We have Eric Martinez, who is dual-language at Manning. Claudia Padilla is dual-language at Miller. Mary Powell is kindergarten at Miller. Megan Kirkwoods is art at Westmont Junior High. Andrea Lett is dual-language at Westmont Junior High. Brian Johnson is the instructional coach at the junior high. Alison Beederman is the band director at the high school. Courtney Templeton is an English teacher at the high school. And Kellyanne Alexander is a nurse for the elementary schools. And those are our new staff.
Well, welcome, everybody. Certainly wish you a great start to, to the year and look forward to meeting you in person at some point. All right, I'm just getting that set for. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment, and we have a couple of people to speak. Michael Pavlik? Okay. Hi, yes. We're ready for public comment? If you're ready, right here at the microphone, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Again, my name is Michael Pavlik, and I'm director of bands over at, at Elmhurst at York Community High School, and I'm just starting my 25th year of teaching, but I taught from 2000 to 2006 was the director of bands at Westmont Junior High School. And I have to tell you that the longer that I've taught, the more I am just impressed and humbled by the tremendous support that I always received in Westmont. I love Westmont, and I loved working with the kids. I just want to thank you for your tremendous support that I experienced when I was here. So, I'm here tonight to speak about the suspension of the band and choir program at the middle school or the junior high right now. And I want you to know that that is a hugely consequential decision. And from my 25 years of experience, I know that once a student stops playing their instrument, they probably won't pick it up again. And so this decision could be a kiss of death to the band program here that I so dearly, dearly love. My colleague Bill Riddle was the director of bands at Westmont for 18 years as well, and he feels the exact same way. You have to take in consideration that over the years that we, that were here, both Mr. Riddle and myself, we turned out anywhere between, you know, a dozen music educators. So, a decision like this affects lots and lots of kids, tens of thousands of kids. When I think about the six students that we sent to, into the music education profession, those six teachers over the next 30 years adds up to lots and lots of kids. So a decision to suspend a program like this, it spans generations, and, and so it is hugely, hugely consequential. My own program at York, we are totally remote right now, and we are meeting virtually, of course. I just finished a virtual band camp a couple of weeks ago, and it went wonderfully. So this wants to work. These are the kids that will make this type of situation work. And I met with them today again, nearly 200 band students, and everyone was on time and they're, they're ready to go. And so this, they understand that this is the new sort of thing that they need to just tackle, and they're ready to do it. I know that the junior high kids would feel that same way. They just need the opportunity to stay connected with those instruments. It is so incredibly, incredibly important. And that's really all I have to say. I would be glad to answer any questions with regard to that, you know, the process, and, and again, to provide any insight that I might be able to, to shed more light on the decision that is, again, just hugely consequential to the program. Cool. Thank you so much.
Next to speak, Heather or John? Heather Costal?
Hi. I'm Heather Costal. I have some prepared remarks here. On August 5th, we received an email from Mr. Jonak stating that he was working with Mr. Troyer to set up Westmont Junior High School's music program after the abrupt resignation of Mrs. Fisher. It specifically said, "We will not be having a typical, traditional instrumental vocal and instrumental band program at this present time." In the days that followed, we learned that our sixth through eighth grade students enrolled in vocal or instrumental music would be automatically switched to a general music class for their elective. It was subsequently stated that this was the option for sixth through eighth graders for their first semester. I and many other parents are not on board with this decision and hope to persuade the board to take immediate action to rectify the situation or inform parents what steps are being taken to ensure that this is very temporary. My family may be slightly biased when it comes to the fine arts. My husband is a professional musician and the owner of Uncle John's Music in downtown Westmont, and I am a visual arts teacher, and I have my master's in art education and have served on the Board of the Illinois Arts Education Association. This being said, we know firsthand that the arts play an important part in a student's overall education. The arts are a core subject, and the junior high needs to start treating them as such. This summer, the Illinois State Board of Education put out the Illinois Priority Learning Standards for the 2020-2021 school year. These priority standards were given to educators so they know what to focus on and where to concentrate their teaching after the stay-at-home order last spring. These priority standards do not say not to have band if your teacher quits or that instrumental music is impossible during remote learning. It specifically says, "We find that in this time of trauma on a national scale that has not been experienced for decades, our current, our current students need the arts as a means of self-expression and a way to process any emotions they are experiencing at this time." Further, though it looks different now during a pandemic than it did before, we believe students need the opportunity to use the arts to communicate who they are, what they believe, and the experiences they are having to their peers and teachers. Beyond self-expression, we find that the arts provide students a mean for social connection. This is desperately needed by our students in a world that is physically distanced for their own safety. As an emphasis, it's rightly put on our students' social-emotional learning in the 2021 academic year. It is our hope that the virtual role the arts play in this will not be forgotten. Our students need the arts in their lives to not only survive the ways in which many of their lives have been upended, but to thrive. I know Mr. Troyer, the junior high vocal music teacher, is a fine educator. My student, who was involved in the spring musical, had a great time. However, a general music class can meet the fine arts goal on paper, but it is not the same nor substitution for band or vocal music class. The social-emotional connection that is such a priority this year is something band and choir students are able to carry with them through junior high and high school. Band camp, football games, concerts, competitions, field trips are not only exceptional educational opportunities, but these shared experiences create lifelong friends. Not having band has already had repercussions on the future of the junior high band program and will continue to have repercussions as these students move into high school. Students have already returned their rented instruments because they do not know what to do. The CUSD 201 band program has been on a slow decline for the past several years. Eight years ago, Westmont Junior High School changed their scheduling, and many parents do not realize that when a student enters sixth grade, they have to choose their elective. If you are a band kid, the only elective you get for three years of junior high is band. A beginning band and graduating fifth grader realizing that they will not get to take visual art or industrial tech or Spanish, et cetera, often does not continue with band, even if they've enjoyed it or want to continue. My children have all made that sacrifice because of band. They've all wanted to take the other classes, too. Most students want the opportunity to experience the other electives and band. Even this year, with the band being canceled, parents were told it was too late for them to switch into one of the other exploratory classes. There are other issues with that schedule as well, but the point is the band numbers have declined over the past eight years. Uncle John's Music has worked closely with the band directors for instrument rental and supplies, so we do have some firsthand knowledge. Again, this decision is a major blow to an already struggling program. The high school band program has had its own obstacles to overcome the last few years as well. Three band directors in four years is not the groundwork for a stable program. However, hiring an experienced and quality band director and changing the position to full-time, having the full support of a thriving and organized Parent Boosters Association, and the support of the Board of Administration has kept the program going. As Mr. Baldorman will gladly tell you, Westmont High School has become the reason people are moving and staying in Westmont, and it's time for the fine arts to become part of that equation. And that starts before these kids get to high school. Most parents and students already know going to the 2021 school year that there was not going to be a typical or traditional education for any subject. Completely eliminating a program is very drastic and unnecessary during remote learning, and I hope that the Board will inform the community soon in how intense to get the junior high band back together. Thank you.
John Costal?
Hello. I'm John Costal, and as a parent of two junior high students and a musician myself, I am concerned that the junior high school is not continuing band this year. The way I understand it, they are not looking to replace the former band director. This is a grave mistake that will not only affect this year's students, but the program as a whole, both junior high and the high school for years to come. We are at a point where it is very important to take steps to build up the program with so much change happening. The high school program has taken many hits in the past few years, going through three teacher changes. Without a band at the junior high, many students will not be motivated to continue their instrument studies, and it will be hard for them to return after a year or two and most likely will not continue. Even with COVID, safety measures, and precautions in place, it's imperative to keep the band program running using innovative technology. We need to hire a new band teacher that can implement these strategies. Besides the obvious use of Zoom for online teaching, we can use Smart Music, which is a web-based suite of music education tools that support efficient practice, helping musicians to develop and grow. With Smart Music, students can work on their methods and ensemble parts. The program can help correct errors and provide accountability. Students will be given weekly assignments to work on and send recordings to their teacher, who in turn can provide feedback, suggestions, and positive reinforcement. This can be done using Zoom, video conferencing, or the exchange of video recordings. The band can also meet together as a group using Zoom to discuss what they're working on and to work together. I know of other districts using Zoom to play together, and even though it's not a traditional sense, the pride of being together in the group will also have a positive effect and sense of belonging on the students. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations. Eric Martinez, Manning, fourth grade dual-language teacher. Stephanie Glotto, Miller, long-term substitute, first grade. Megan Kirkwood, increase in FTE, .5 to .6 art at Westmont Junior High School. Item two, ratification of July 2020 regular payroll. Item three, approval of August 2020 expenditure report. Item four, renewal of self-workers compensation insurance. Item five, approval of Westmont High School pool rental with Academy Bullets as presented and authorize Kimberly Anderson to execute the contract. Does anyone have any questions or would like any particular item pulled from the consent agenda for individual consideration? Okay, if not, the Chair will entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. O'Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, next item is information and discussion update on 2020-2021 school year.
I want to update the board a little bit on the 2020-2021 school year since we've made the decision to go to remote learning, and then also talk a little about the transition later on this school year. Just to kind of, and some of this is review from our other presentations, but I'll go through it very quickly. But again, we're currently in phase four of the governor's plan to reopen Illinois. And again, you know, phase five is when we have a vaccine or no new cases over a sustained period. And so, the reality is, this school year will more than likely be in phase four for the entire school year. Again, just to review, phase four, what that means for schools is again, social distancing in our classrooms, face coverings at all times, temperature checks, trying to minimize students mixing, student groups mixing, and so possibly lunch in the classroom, keeping the small cohorts together. And it's the teachers that move, not the, not the students. And then, again, the auditoriums, cafeterias, those types of spaces are, you try not to use those because you're limited to 50 people in a space. And then we, other considerations as we're working through this school year, we know that some parents will not be comfortable sending their children when we go to a hybrid model. We have some staff, and we have identified many of those staff members who, due to their own health concerns, or somebody that lives in the home, being in person is not an option for them. And then again, we're, right now, we're assessing students to see where they're at, and then we know that DuPage County Health Department may also impose restrictions. Again, what we're focused on is the health and safety of our students and staff. That's our number one priority. Again, we want the, whether it's remote or in person, it needs to be high-quality, engaging. We're also acknowledging that we need to focus on the social-emotional needs of our students and having that consistency, stability for our students and staff. This, again, is the reason why we made the decision to go to remote learning. Again, we have a high percentage of our families, and we will be surveying families again as the October gets closer to see where our parents are at. Again, we're working through all those staff members who indicated that they may not be able to be in person. And then, again, it's, you know, right now, we're trying to solve the issue of having both a high-quality rote and in-person learning. In the next discussion I am staffing, I'll address that a little bit. And then the other thing that is occurring is we keep getting additional guidelines. And so July 23rd, we got something, August 4th. And even now, working with DuPage County Public Health, there are other things that we're learning and, and shape our decision-making. This is updated from the last time we met in terms of what districts were planning. And as the openings of schools became, you know, were closer, many districts then, you can see many of them that originally were in-person have now transitioned to remote. And there's still a couple of elementary districts that are still doing a hybrid in-person, remote, but for the most part, almost all the public schools in the area have opted for remote at this time. Some, it's similar to us until the beginning of August, some it's the end of the first quarter. There's a couple that's taking it all the way for the first semester. Our transition plan, again, this current week, we start it with our students. So phase one for us, the weeks of August 24th and 31st, students are in remote. And then, when we get to the third week, that's when we're going to start identifying those targeted groups that we'll be bringing into the schools on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Each school has a data team. They'll be taking a look at the students, how they're performing academically, social-emotional needs, and make that decision as to who they'll be bringing in. Phase three, we start to increase the number of days we're bringing, bringing students in. And then as we approach that, August, October 1st, that's when we'll start to transition more students. So we're bringing the students in so that they can get acclimated again to the school setting. And then with week five, then, we would be doing a hybrid model in-person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then remote on Wednesday. This is new. We've been having meetings with the DuPage County Public Health Department, the superintendent of DuPage County. And we've been trying to, to get some guidance as to what are some metrics that we can be looking at, and not that this is the only metrics. And so, this is all tentative. We met last Friday, we met on Monday, and then we have one more meeting Friday to review all this and give feedback, and then it'll go public, and then we can share it publicly. And, and it may get tweaked a little bit. But basically, the way DuPage County Public Health, they're taking the data from the Illinois Department of Public Health, and they're, right now, there's three levels. Minimum transmission, moderate transmission, substantial transmission. And then you can see the metrics that they're looking at. The weekly counts per 100,000, the overall case numbers, if they're increasing. They're also looking at the youth counts, because now we're, more information, more data on school-age students, and they're spreading the COVID-19. The weekly positivity test, and then two or more neighboring counties. And for DuPage, the counties they look at are Will and Kane. Those are considered our, and Cook are neighboring counties. When you're in yellow, that basically means that in-person, again, social distancing, mask, all those types of things. Moderate, that's when you can start, again, it's the, you can have in-person, social distancing. The tricky part with the, well, I'll, the next slide will show you what it means for the different school situations. The way that this will work, though, is that it only takes one metric in a certain color range to move the county into that level. So, you know, for instance, right now, most recently, DuPage County has had weekly counts of 71 in that neighborhood per 100,000. So that's in the orange. So that would move DuPage County into the orange or to the moderate transmission. If the positivity rate gets above 8% or if we get above 100 for the per 100,000 count, all it takes is one metric and you'd bump into the substantial transmission. You stay at a certain level for two weeks before you can drop to a lower level. So you have to maintain numbers for, for two weeks before that happens. And then the other piece, too, is the, the counties. And right now, Kane and Will have been in orange, and so they're our neighboring counties, and so that impacts our ratings as well. And so this is, will start to give us some idea of the metrics that we need to look at. And then, in terms of, this is the slide that tells you kind of what it means for your, whether you're remote or in-person. Again, at the minimal, you'd be in-person and six feet distancing, mask. And then with all the options, and this is from the ISB, with all the options, there's a remote learning option that we need to provide our families. If you're in the orange, then it's still the social distancing. The tough piece here is the interaction, no interaction between cohorts. And so, if you think of a typical high school model and the way typically our junior high operates, a cohort would be a group of students that stay together pretty much for the entire day. So you're thinking about a self-contained elementary school, you know? So, all your first graders stay together in their room. Teachers may come and go, but the students stay together. That model starts to fall apart at the high school and junior high model. So, we are talking to DuPage County Public Health about that, and if they're, you know, how, how we can look at those cohorts, because being in the orange, if we operate with this type of guidance, it'll be difficult for us to transition our high school and our junior high without limiting the cohorts. Now, some high schools are talking about, they're getting creative, and they're talking about, well, what if you, you know, the students just spent their time with the one teacher in one class for a period of time, and then kind of, you kind of knock out a couple of classes, and then you take on the next couple of classes, you know? Similar to like, some universities that are on quarters, you know, that type of a schedule. So it's going to take a little creativity. The other challenge is always going to be busting as well. If you shift to the substantial transmission, that's when 100% remote would be the guidance. Now, DuPage County Public Health, the Illinois Department of Public Health, Now, DuPage County Public Health, the Illinois Department of Public Health would, will never tell schools what they need to do. You know, they're just providing us with the metrics, how to interpret those. But ultimately, the decision is a local decision of how we want to function under that. So the decision drivers for us as we approach October, again, we'll be looking at the guidance of CDC, IDPH, DuPage. We want to update our parent survey. We're going to be discussing staffing in a couple of minutes. And then we may have to take a look at the hybrid model that junior high and high school are proposing and possibly tweak those. And then there's also the, you know, decisions outside of school, those impact school. And that's what people are doing when they're not in the school environment. I don't know if you've been following Will County now, they have tighter constraints. And a lot of that is revolving around, you know, the, you know, people were not wearing masks. People were not following some of the guidelines. And so that's what creates, creates the spikes. There's also been a challenge, I haven't heard too much about it in Will County or DuPage County. But some counties are experiencing a challenge during the contact tracing. Because people don't want to, you know, tell on somebody or, you know, get somebody in trouble. And so, you know, knowing who we need to quarantine at a given time, that's, that's critical. And so if people aren't forthcoming, who they are in contact with, then it's difficult to know, you know, who needs to be quarantined. And that also helps to, to stop the spread. So again, during this time, you know, people need to wear masks, they need to social distance, wash your hands, all those things. And by that, we're doing those things, a greater probability that we'll be able to resume in-person learning. Any questions?
Kevin, I was just wondering, you talked about, you know, potential of the phase four, week of October 5th, the students resume in-person. Would I assume then that that would be the plan that was presented by the elementary buildings and the junior high and the senior high where we, we would, okay?
Right, that would be planned now, depending upon what we have to do with cohorts. Again, we may have to tweak junior high and high school, but we'd bring that to the board. But yeah, those hybrid models that we talked about earlier, that's what our goal is.
Kevin, I think you might have mentioned this, and forgive me for making you repeat, but you said that the, this yellow, orange, and red models are being discussed right now. And I know these are just guidelines. But did you say a timeline for when it might be determined whether these become firm?
Our meeting is at noon on Friday, our Zoom meeting. And typically, they last about an hour. This one might go a little longer. And so I'm, I would guess that late in the afternoon Friday, they'll be made public.
And they're, and they're looking at and updating these transmission levels? Daily, weekly?
It'd be every Friday.
Okay.
Every Friday, they would post what the, the different numbers are for each of the metrics.
Okay, so I guess the reason I'm asking the questions is as we look to plan, you know, October 5th really isn't, October 1st, October 5th, it really is not that far off.
Right.
So are we, you know, I know, again, still in development. Are we planning based on an orange situation? Is that the, the guidance at this point in time?
Right. Right, based upon the way that the, the metrics currently are and based upon what you're seeing for our county. And then because it just takes one metric, I'm pretty confident it will be orange at that time. So it's a matter of making sure our plan works for those constraints.
Okay.
You mentioned for the junior high and the high school, the potential for kind of adjusting how those classes are. Are you kind of talking about like block scheduling?
Right.
Okay, is there anybody in the surrounding area that was on? If I go way back, I, I, I think that my high school went block scheduling after I left. But is there kind of anybody who has that schedule around us?
I can't think of anybody locally that currently has a block. But a lot of, we're all kind of looking at that now. Some version of a block, just because you can minimize, again, the number of class periods in a day.
Yeah, so like potentially a cohort of students has social studies in the morning, English in the afternoon, and they get that semester's worth of work done in three weeks.
Or, or sure, yeah.
Something along those lines.
Short period of time, yeah.
Kevin, I know that I ready testing is going to be September 1st for the junior high. And I was curious if it would be similar timing for the elementary and high school students? And is the, is the assessment, that assessment going to be driving which students are coming on in that phase two, that September 7th? Which students we're pulling into school and which students are still remaining fully remote?
And the, the, the testing window is similar for all the buildings.
Okay.
Okay, they're national testing windows, so they're all going to be testing in the same window. And that is some of the data, the data tends to be looking at. So it will just be simply, you know, students who are engaged, attending. The student being able to complete the work and their responsiveness. And then also the social emotional piece as well. So all those things will be data points that the team will look at and determine who they think would benefit from coming in.
Will IEPs play into that as well, assuming?
For the next board meeting, can we get some data on engagement? And for, and then that, I don't know how fast that testing data comes back. But I'd love to know where we're at after a really difficult spring? And, and some thoughts from the admin team on if there was big drops in our, I'm assuming nationwide, that's going to be the case? How we're planning on helping catch up our, our students?
Yeah, I definitely can have that information for you.
Kevin, I have a question about cohorts. Are they defining, so a couple of questions. First, is the DuPage County Health Department saying that the high schools and junior highs cannot go back in a hybrid model unless they're in cohorts? Or that it's, it's recommended that they do that? And then the second part of that question is, are they saying cohort is like a class of students? Or is it an alphabet group of students? Those are two questions I have about that.
The DuPage County Health will only give recommendations. And so if the county is in the orange, their recommendation would be to, to limit the mixing of students. So a cohort is a group of students that stay together. So in a typical high school, when the bell rings and kids get up and they spread out to other classes, their recommendation is that you limit those opportunities if possible. One of the biggest reasons comes down to, again, the contact tracing. And so, you know, if a student is only in, you know, two, three classes in a day and they're with, you know, the high school had their class size down to about 12. So they're coming in contact with, let's say, 36 students during that time. It's much easier to identify who they had close contact with. Plus, the number of individuals that potentially would need to be quarantined is smaller than if they went through a traditional schedule. The other thing that we need to be cognizant of is the 15 minutes. That's cumulative over the course of the day. So literally, if you have enough passing periods, you could hit 15 minutes that kids could have close contact. Again, in a traditional schedule. So that's how they're defining cohorts. And that's why they're, they're recommending that you try to maintain cohorts as much as possible.
And then one last question, just about the block schedule. Or is there any kind of research being done about different types of block schedules? You know, I know that one concern with the, the model that was mentioned is the learning loss that takes place if you have, you know, all of your math one semester and don't have any for the following semester and summer. And I think these kids are already struggling a little bit as far as achievement, given what happened in the spring.
Yeah, so yes, the high school, you know, we're going to be looking at different models to see what makes the most amount of sense for our students.
So can I ask another clarifying question about the survey? So are we planning on surveying the parents again before we come close to the October deadline to see what percentage of families are planning to stay remote versus choosing a hybrid model?
Right.
And so with, my assumption would be if we don't have a lot of parents fill out that survey, so we've got a lot of unknowns, or we still have a high percentage of remote that will affect our ability to go a hybrid model?
Right, right. And we will, we've been getting pretty, on that type of a survey, we've been getting pretty good response from families. And then we have been following up with families who did not complete it so that we get their responses as well. So we'll, we'll make sure that we get, you know, close to 100% compliance on that.
And how is our logistics for our supplies that we would need to open up for a hybrid model? So things like masks, I know those things have Plexiglas, those things have been in nationwide shortage. How is our supply of those items?
Masks were fine, face shields were fine. The last time we talked to Joe Smith about like disinfectants and those types of things, prior to going remote, we had, until December, we had a supply, plus we had other orders in the queue. So we're probably not going through the cleaning supplies as quickly being on remote. So that timeline is probably being extended out. And then Plexiglas, we are able to get Plexiglas. Joe Smith's been buying sheets of it and then cutting it to the size that we need. And so he has been able to get Plexiglas.
Is there a plan to update the teacher survey at all with?
The teacher survey, kind of where we're at now. The teachers, those that indicated that there would be a reason why, they qualify for one of those, those reasons. I've been following up with them. If it's a medical, I need something from their doctor that says that yes, indeed, they're being treated for a condition that makes them more vulnerable. The, so those people were able to work with them and have them work remotely. The childcare issues, that can be a reason, but it's not a reason why necessarily somebody would not be required to be in-person. And I think those people that indicate that, they've been able to resolve that piece. And so I don't anticipate that being, being an issue. So we're able to, and if anybody didn't fill out the survey, then they will need to contact me and go through that process before anybody would be allowed to be remote.
Where are our staff now? So are staff teaching from home or from school based on their preference?
Right now, similar to the, the, the first week everybody was in. Most teachers are in-person. There are, again, there are some that, you know, qualify for, for being remote. We're transitioning the staff the same way that the students. So the first couple of weeks, the staff self-select two days that they're in the building. And the other days, they're remote. And then when we ramp up to four days, then the staff are in four days. So similar to how the students ramp up.
And what's their comfort level with so far?
It varies. Some of the staff are fine as long as, you know, masks, protocols are being followed. Some people are a little bit more anxious about it, so it just varies.
Are they for the most part sharing rooms or like one teacher, one room? They kind of have their own space?
Right, one teacher, one room.
Okay.
They, they, occasionally, there may be a team meeting and most of the time, it's happening Zoom. They're still, even if they're all in the building, they're doing Zoom meetings. If there are two people, they're making sure that they're socially distanced.
So I know one of the things you're going to talk, you're going to talk about staffing? Or have you kind of combined these two items? Is there more to say on staffing?
Yeah, I got my cheat sheet over there for staffing.
So I still am, I mean, I'm still thinking about this a little bit from the last meeting when I, when I mentioned it. It's like, isn't it possible for a teacher to remote into a specific classroom using Zoom or something and having, you know, if they have these, if they have concerns or they have a medical reason or whatever, and still have in-person learning guided by a teacher who is remote? Instead of vice versa, where the students are remote and the teachers are at school? It could be the other way around, or the teacher could be in the building and remoting into the classroom. And so it wouldn't be as, as big of a tech, technology issue as trying to do a simulcast and broadcast it out everywhere or whatever. So I just, I mean, it's something to consider, I guess, or think about and see if that's any kind of feasibility to that. As it would be a way around some of the, having to hire substitutes or find additional teaching staff or something if we still could use them. We're using them remotely now and it basically, we'd still be using them remotely. Only the remote learning would happen in the classroom for those particular teachers where the, where the need is there.
Right.
So.
And that is, when we, you know, transition, that is part of the discussion we're having. And that is impacting some of the staffing decisions. In some cases, we'd be hiring additional teaching assistants who would supervise the classroom while the teacher is remote.
Okay.
But then in other situations, when you have to have both, you have to be able to support both in-person and remote, we may need to hire somebody more so on the, you know, the remote end than it is on the in-person end, if that makes sense.
Okay, I mean, I know these are very specific for the given class and the subject and, and that sort of thing, so.
Was there an ETA for the Illinois Public IDPH dashboard, the youth dashboard? And I apologize if you said it, I missed it.
The, for the youth data? That's, DuPage County Public Health is working with the Illinois Department of Public Health. DuPage County Health has that information. What they want to make sure though is that, they're, they're being told that the IDPH is also going to have that metric. And they don't want to have their metric being a little bit different than the IDPH. So if the IDPH doesn't start sharing that data, then DuPage will start sharing their, their own data for DuPage.
I've got one more question, sorry. So how will the planning process look over this next month? As we, we look towards moving towards hybrid or if, let's say, the governor shuts down the state? And we know for sure we're not going to be able to move to a hybrid if we're in that red zone? How will the planning process, if it looks like we're going to have an extended time of remote learning?
If we have an extended time of remote learning, we still have some days, remote planning days, that are available to the school to use. And so then we would probably have to take a brief hiatus from the remote learning to get the staff together and plan out, okay, what is this now going to look like long-term? And what can we sustain? And what that looks like. Hopefully, the, the key then definitely will be in bringing the smaller groups. And hopefully, like last March, it was, nobody could be in schools. So that wasn't an option. Hopefully, we won't get to that point, even if we are in that red and we'll still be able to bring those, the small groups in. But definitely, we'll have to plan for that.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year update?
Sorry, one more. Did Will County go into red today or are they?
They went into red.
Okay.
They're, um, well, a- again, they're region, because they're Kinga Key and Will.
Okay.
And I believe they had sustained number of days of over eight percent positivity.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that bumped them into the, uh, into the red.
So who else, so for orange, two or more neighboring counties in orange, once in the last four weeks, okay.
And, and the last, and Kane and, uh, Will have been in the orange.
Okay, and who are the rest of our neighboring counties?
I believe Cook would be the other.
Okay.
Other county.
Okay, so if they can come out of red, we've got a chance.
As I said, you know, when you look at the metrics and, um, you know, chances are, we'll be operating a lot in that orange.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and the hope is that we never shift to red.
Yeah.
But I think we plan for the orange.
Which are, which are. Which that was our plan, our hybrid plan fits really nicely into orange.
Right.
Orange.
Okay, anything else? We'll move on then to staffing related to twenty twenty, twenty twenty one?
And then, um, one of the things we've been doing as an admin team, again, as we've been identifying those staff who, um, would be, need to be remote, is, uh, seeing in order to get to that hybrid remote model, what our staffing needs. Now, this is, um, again, absent the conversation about, okay, if we really need to try to sustain cohorts, what does that look like? But, um, for the early childhood program, uh, basically, a teaching assistant is what the early childhood program would need. Um, Manning Elementary, um, Lindsay thinks, um, again, because of trying to do the dual-language remote and in-person, uh, dual-language teacher, dual-language teaching assistant, and then, um, a special ed resource teacher. Uh, Tim's still looking at his building, he really doesn't anticipate needing a significant increase in staff, but he wants to, um, you know, review the staffing and make sure that he's not overlooking anything. Uh, Westmont Junior High would need one, uh, teacher. Now, I will say on the heels of the parent comment, that's not banned, but we will be, yes, I mean, we're not gonna go an entire year without having a, a ban program. Um, Westmont High School, um, most of their issues, again, are the teacher needs to be remote. And so this is, Joe, what you're suggesting, this is picking up a couple of teacher assistants who would be in a classroom with a group of students while the teacher is the one zooming in and providing the, the instruction. Uh, Student Services, we hired one elementary nurse, we still need to hire another elementary nurse. And then, um, we currently are down two custodians. These two custodians are in addition too, because, um, with the cleaning demands, and then even we're finding this out, even though we're on remote, you're finding this out, you know, somebody there, um, a family member tests positive, so now that person has to be off of work until they get tested. And so all of a sudden, you're down another person that you didn't anticipate being down, and so, um, that's what it looks like right now. Um, but again, those numbers could, could fluctuate a little bit as we, you know, look at the metrics and then continue the planning.
So Kevin, talk me through this a little bit, how, how does this work? I mean, obviously, we're in a situation right now that is unique.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, temporary, we don't know how long temporary is. Um, teaching assistants, I'm a little more familiar with how we can make that a little more fluid. But how does that work when you hire a teacher? Um, knowing that in a couple of years, this situation might resolve itself, and we won't need this level of staffing, like how, how do we deal with that in the, um, in this process?
With the, um, with teachers, um, it's, uh, anytime you have to riff, reduce, you know, reduction force, it's by seniority. And again, with, uh, para now, teachers based upon their evaluations are placed into different, uh, groupings. And so it's the, um, least senior teacher in the lowest group that would be red first. And so you would, um, you know, if you hire teachers this year, there's a possibility you want to need those teachers next year. I mean, there is that possibility, and so you would be, you know, the, typically the newest hired is the person that is, that is red.
And have we run any, Kim, have we run any, like, basic financials on if we were to move forward with this level of staffing? Even for this year? With salary. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is, is the, just to clarify, so my assumption is that if there is a teacher that cannot work because of a health condition, they can't report to duty, that they would be on like an FMLA, like an unpaid leave for the year? So we're not paying their salary, but we're paying another teacher's salary to replace them temporarily? Or is this additional staffing we need to meet the space requirements? And so regardless of who's coming back or not coming back into a hybrid model, we need to hire this just to get the right ratios of students?
Right, th- this is so that we have the right numbers, the ratios, then we're also able to support remote and in-person.
Okay.
Um, so that's right, that's why we'd be hiring the staff, the, the staff. If somebody were to contract the, um, virus and be able to teach remotely or perform their duties remotely, then, you know, they can continue working. Um, and the instance where that person, because of their symptoms, is not able to work, then that's somebody who would go through their sick leave and then, um, possibly have to go on FMLA.
Does the, what's the difference between what we're talking about here as far as hiring additional staff and hiring substitute teachers? To fill in some gaps, like long-term substitutes?
Um, the, we, we are thinking about long-term subs as well, but the long-term sub would be more, um, again, this, this teacher needs to, uh, quarantine for X number of days, and then they return. Or this teacher, you know, again, it's just a, they have to be off until they get the negative COVID test. And so the long-term sub is just somebody that we can fit in in spots as needed. Uh, this staff would actually have like a dedicated, uh, group of students that they're working with long-term.
So I'm sorry, my brain is not working. So for example, the elementary, for Manning Elementary, the need is one dual-language teacher. So we need one more dual-language teacher than we have currently to meet the, the needs of remote plus hybrid. Okay, got it. And we would need to do that before, if we're talking about October.
We need to start posting and going through that process.
Very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Would they be a con, would they have a, a short contract just for the school year, to Laura's point?
Well, um, you know, teachers are on a one-year contract, and then if you remember in March, the board takes action on non-tenure teachers through rehire them. So come March, we would want to know what our potential staffing needs are so that we can, can riff. And if anything, we would be conservative and riff, and then if you need to bring somebody back, rehire them later in the spring.
Is there, are these numbers assuming the high level of amount of parents that we're planning to do remote?
It, right, it's based upon, um, right, uh, if we go with the original responses.
Yep.
Yeah, this, that's what this is based on.
And this is not inclusive of everybody who was just brought on?
Correct.
Yeah. And can you help me understand the difference between certifications, whatever it may be, between a TA and a teacher?
Um, the, uh, uh, teacher has the teaching licensure, so, um, they went through a four-year college program that had the, um, uh, teacher preparation, uh, as part of it. And so then they have their licensure, they've taken the, the exams they need and so forth. Uh, for TAs, TAs can have, uh, I believe with TAs, two years of college. Um, or TAs can have a high school diploma, and then there's a qualifying exam that they can take. And so they receive also, uh, a licensure from the state, but it's to be a teaching assistant. And teaching assistants can supervise students, but they can't provide instruction.
Do we have TAs that have done a four-year program but don't hold a current license? Like they don't want to be full-time teachers, they prefer to be TAs?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a significant amount, a small amount?
No, no, it's not a significant amount, but we have a couple of TAs that.
You could hire someone as a TA who is qualified as a teacher, but they just haven't found a teaching job. And that happens frequently.
Mm-hmm.
That person who's qualified as a teacher could teach in a classroom, so for.
Like Ms. Libita last year, I think, right? Okay, okay.
Are most districts that are hybrid, because we have to offer a remote option, are most districts having to hire staff?
Mm-hmm. That's why, you know, the reason why, um, so many districts were flipping right before the start of the year was, um, because of staffing needs. Um, and then also getting into, um, you know, certain protocols in place for some of the things that are being required now because of the guidelines. Um, one of the things for, like, this gets to your question, Dana, about a sub versus hiring somebody. The other, um, thing that came out, and this was one of the postings that came out, um, like August, our board meeting was the fourth, so it came out, I think, about August sixth, like a couple of days later, is that anyone who has a COVID, um, symptom, and they eventually took, put a line through runny nose. But if you have no, if you're nauseous, if you have, um, a headache, you know, different things like that, the, uh, student needs to go home, and any siblings, and a staff member needs to go home. And they need to remain home until either they are tested or they're evaluated by a physician, and the physician indicates that this is something, you know, this is seasonal allergies, you know, something other than COVID nineteen. And so there's the possib, you know, you start looking at that, there's the possibility that either, um, a staff member doesn't come in because they woke up with one of those things, and so then you need somebody to cover that class.
And that's one symptom.
Right.
Could people, can, is it possible to like preemptively, like, like I know, and I'm thinking of this from a student perspective, my son has seasonal allergies, so I know, like, he's got that diagnosis. Can I, you know, put that note in his file for March of next year when his nose starts running? And, and that's okay, he doesn't, so then he gets his runny nose on, you know, March third instead of March tenth or whatever that may be, and then we've already got a note in his file and we know that it's allergies, is that possible?
Yeah, that's possible.
Folks who suffer from migraines, you know, thinking of a wide variety.
Right.
Cause you get a runny nose and a headache for a whole heck of a lot of stuff, yeah.
But the other statement you made is, a doctor's notebook, they're evaluated, and they can also bring that in.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right. Are we concerned about the ability to hire, I mean, some of the teachers that we need to hire are very specialized. So a dual-language teacher, a dual-language aide, and a special education teacher are, are hard to find. Um, that requires special education and certification. So is, how realistic is our ability to hire in time to start on time?
Um, you know, all we can do is post and see what the applicants are. I mean, even when we, uh, hired Eric Martinez, he was late in the summer, but we still had candidates to choose from. So, you know, some, uh, um, I, I know one district had several people resign right before the start of the school year, so there could be people who are looking. Um, CPS typically starts later, and so sometimes there are teachers that would normally teach for CPS, but it's an opportunity to teach in other districts that will, will apply, so.
Have other districts started posting, like where are we at?
Um, we're all kind of at the same point, because we, we're all kind of working on the same timelines. Some districts have delayed their start because of it, so they pushed their start back until after Labor Day. Um, other districts start when we did, but we're all kind of balling remote right now, trying to fill in all these pieces so that we can transition.
And what's like the start to finish timeline typically for like, from posting a job to, cause we are, call it, five weeks out from October first?
Right, uh, typically, um, the, uh, posting is up for ten days, and you can start interviewing before then. And then, uh, once you, um, go through the interview process, um, that can be done over a couple of days depending upon the number of candidates. And then, um, they have to go through, you know, criminal background check, those types of things. The ROE has picked up their pace, it was running about two weeks, but they've gotten, um, it's, it's been done quicker. And so, um, you know, you can get somebody hired in ten days, you know, if you have the right candidates and, you know, you, you move through it. And then we can always, assuming that they have all their credentials, criminal background check and so forth, we can get that person working in the district pending board approval. So we're not tied to just waiting until a board meeting to have somebody start.
So is this something, Kevin, that you'd have the board, I mean, I know this is a discussion item for tonight. Would we be approving the posting of the positions at a, at the next board meeting? If that's the direction we decide to go, and I'm just trying to figure out.
Right, what, what I need at this point right now is, you know, the, the appetite of the board to go ahead and start looking for candidates. So if the board thinks that, you know, they understand that there's a, a cost involved, um, and if the board, you know, the consensus of the board is, yes, we need to start looking for these positions, then tomorrow we start the process.
So I would, as a parent, I think, I speak for many parents in our district, that we would do almost anything to get our kids back in, in learning, and I know, Kevin, one of the things that you had said in your memo was that this is not the start that any of us want, not administrative, teachers, students, parents, anyone. Um, I think it's important to move forward safely and how we can. That said, I, I'd just like to state that a quarter of a million dollars is, is that right? Is a significant pile on to the top, to the art deficit already. And we're gonna have to be more, um, stringent. It's gonna be hard to turn the ship, um, with an added cost. I think that a pandemic is going to have added cost, and it's just the cost of providing education during a pandemic, and it's not something we're going to take lightly. Um, but I think it will be more, as a board, we need to be even more diligent about addressing our deficit um, as, as we can to right the ship in light of some costs that we've needed to take on, because it's what we needed to do as a district. So I'm happy to provide support for that. I just think it's gonna be even more difficult as a district to, to right our ship. That said, I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, I would just say, I, I, I think it would be the right thing to do, at least to start posting, start getting some candidates in. We don't have to hire them right on the spot, we still don't know what's gonna happen with the COVID numbers over the next couple of weeks, but we should certainly be prepared to hire i- i- if, if hopefully we can move into that, into that next phase. Okay? Okay, that, that's what I would say, no reason not to post and, and start interviewing and start seeing the candidates. It's just, I, I agree, there's a lot of money, but if that's what it comes down to, we, we educate the kids. But I think we should at least be prepared.
I'll agree with that, I think, you know, we need to move forward with being prepared. You know, this year's budget is just going to be up and down on different categories. There may be some opportunities where, you know, we're not going to be spending money in certain areas that might offset some of, of this money if we end up going that, that route. So I think it's best just to be prepared and then, then figure that out later.
I agree, I'm in the same, the same camp. It's, none of this is ideal, but we're in the middle of a pandemic and we want to educate our kids. So I think we should go ahead and start planning for it.
I als, I also agree, I mean, I think, you know, as the memo says, it's a fluid situation. I think, you know, and, and we just don't have a lot of time. And so if we keep, if we keep ruminating on it, we're going to run out of time and then we're going to be in even stickier situation in a few weeks when October 5th is here, so.
As someone who's hired hundreds, thousands of people, I think we need to get a jump on the hiring. I know that it might cost us more this year and we'll certainly not be the only school district in this situation. And our, our budget and our deficit is something that we have to figure out, but it is, versus this, a longer-term solution. And right now, we need to, we need to make our community feel safe, we need to make our staff feel safe, we need to feel safe sending our kids to school, or not, or sending them remote, whatever you may choose. But yeah, I think time is of, time is of the essence, especially from a staffing perspective for us to get a jump on this.
If we hire and we don't, we hit the red and we don't need these staff, what happens in that situation? Is it just a sunk cost? How does that work?
Depends on the position. Non-certified with 30 days' notice can be released. Certified staff, though, that's, you know, somebody that you would have on until the end of the year.
Adina, did you have?
All right, I echo everyone's sentiments, I think it's, you know, time to move forward, we have a plan. We have guidelines to, you know, keep in mind and not to, like, forego them, but keeping those, you know, all in, in mind as we move forward. But I think we do have to move forward with at least posting and hopefully hiring additional staff.
I just have one other thing to add, one other thought about it. You know, I think, again, post as soon as we possibly can, given the time of the year and the timeline, but also to just consider at what point, though, when our, you know, it says the personnel needs may increase, like, is there kind of a cutoff or at what point, like, we just need too many people? And, and what happens then? So just, you know, having that foresight, I think, would be really important.
So there's, it looks like two certified staff that would be needed, the remainder would be?
Non-certified.
Non-certified?
Or is it three?
A dual-language teacher?
Dual-language.
Special.
Oh, the special education teacher as well, yes, so three.
Yeah, three.
And arguably, we could probably utilize them if we were in red for the 100% hybrid.
I mean, they, they could have, you know, filling in spots.
Yeah, sorry, 100, red, 100% remote, yes. Thank you.
Sounds like we have a consensus.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is appointment of board committees. And so, let me look at it online, does it show the different committees on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the standing board committees are facilities, finance, and policy. And then so, I don't know, really, strategic planning and public relations, are they not really considered board committees? They were really more or less superintendent committees, correct?
Right, yeah.
So that would, that wouldn't be, those would be, I mean, we still would want representation on them, but.
Right, right.
But it's, they're not necessarily meetings that would need to be posted and all of that.
Correct.
Okay. So currently, I am on the policy committee and Laura is on the policy committee.
And are we also saying that there should only be two members on each one of these committees or less, or are we?
You can have a maximum of three.
But then we always have to post that meeting, right?
Right.
Well, the, the three would have to be posted anyhow, the three board committees.
Do the board committees have to be posted anyhow, regardless of how many board members are on them?
Yes, because they're board committees.
Okay.
Yeah. They're board-level committees, so they would be posted. The other two wouldn't necessarily have to be unless there were three members. So I would say, you know, I don't think there's anything really wrong with.
No.
And, and it depends on the nature of the participation of, I mean, all board members could go to a strategic planning committee if they're there in, kind of in listen mode, right?
And you're not participating or debating each other, so.
Anyhow, so Gary, what committees were you, were you on?
I was on facility and finance.
And Dana?
I was on finance.
And Laura, were you on another committee or policy?
Technically, public relations.
So one, one thing, I'm sorry to stop the conversation, I'm looking at our policy and it looks like we need to update our policy, because there's only three committees in policy two, one, five, a board policy committee, a teacher-parent advisory committee, and a behavioral interventions committee as standing committees. So it sounds like we just need to update our policy to what we're actually doing.
The second two committees?
Yes.
Those are handled through the handbook committee?
Okay. And a board member doesn't sit on those. Does, does a board member sit on the handbook committee? I don't think so. Not that we need to. Not that we need to. It says, nothing in this policy limits the authority of the superintendent or designated to create and use committees to report to him or other staff members, so we can create whatever we want, I just think this policy is outdated and we should update it.
What are you looking at right now, Dana?
Policy two, it's a, it's a committee policy under our board policies.
Under the board policies?
Yep.
Okay, that's, I was.
Yep, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Do we, can I just take a step back and say, are, are the committees working for us? Is there room, do we like the way that our committees, the committees that we have and?
I've been fine with it, working that much here of it.
I mean, I guess I feel like there's some reporting out items that we could adjust with the committees, but I feel like the, at least the three standing board committees are committees we need. But I think, you know, we could probably, in our board retreat, or whatever we're going to call that, we could probably discuss, like, how are we informing each other of what happens on each of the committee meetings? And how are we making, you know, doing reports out on what happened in the last policy meeting and what's happening in the finance committee meeting, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, so typically, the policy committee is pretty well-defined as far as we review the policies and then they show up on the board agenda for the board to review. So we just kind of do a pre-review and if there's anything that's a red flag that, that the committee says, oh no, we better get some more input from our attorney on this particular policy, or we'd like to add something different here, then we kind of send it back at that point. So it's kind of a pre-review and, and most of the policies are already come to us pretty much ready to use, so they're just reviewed and then moved forward. So that's kind of that reporting out that you're talking about. The other two committees meet once or twice a year. And again, it's a similar function to kind of get a pre-review on some of the things having to do with facilities and finance before it then comes to the whole board.
And that's always attached to the board docs, but I, I understand what you want, we want to talk about at the board retreat, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, or whatever we're going to call that, I think that's fine, okay?
Yep. I liked, I have no issue, I asked that loaded question, but I really am fine with the three. I think sometimes it's good to pause, though, and just say, we've been doing this forever and is this what best serves us? Right. I really liked your thought, Kevin, I believe you had updated us about there being a standing meeting time? Did I dream that, or? So that, that we had standard meeting times? I know for finance, it's been difficult for us to find a time, and so I really liked that standing meeting.
Right, I think, you know, I can put together a, a committee calendar because if you look at the, the year, it's cyclical. And so, you know, typically, Kim has finance committee meetings that revolve around the building and the budget, you know, the lobby, those types of things. So typically, the finance committee would meet, Kim reviews that information with the finance committee before taking it to the board. Facility, same thing, you know, there are certain times we're looking at our facility projects, identifying what we need to do for the upcoming year. And there's a couple of things that are popping up right now that we probably are going to need a facility committee meeting about. So yeah, there, because of the cyclical nature of some of the work, we can probably, you know, fit those in so that people know, okay, this is when facility committee meeting will take place.
So if we have three committees, not, someone can't serve, right? Not two, four, six, right?
No, because you're going to have three people on a committee.
Or you just have to post them.
Those three always have to be posted regardless.
Gotcha.
Okay, so as far as facilities, finance, and policy, we have two on policy already, unless one of us wanted to drop off, I don't particularly want to drop off.
I'm fine staying unless someone, you know, someone can still join, I guess.
We, yeah, someone could join that if they want to, on the policy committee. We have two on the finance, we have one on facilities. And then public relations is really a superintendence committee and strategic planning would also be a superintendence committee. So I think we could look for some participation on those two. I know definitely you're going, there'll be some, some committee work or meetings on the strategic planning. I'm not as clear on public relations. That was from the joint committee, is that what, what the origin of that was?
I guess to Dana's question, we feel like the public relations committee is one that we all know that that is an area that we need to improve as a district. I'm not sure how much progress that committee has made to no fault of anyone other than just life. So I guess, the point I'm trying to make is if we're going to have that committee, we should probably give it some purpose. If we're not going to give it some purpose, then let's just nix it for now and we can revisit it when we have the capacity to make the committee be functional.
I, I think I would agree with putting it on hold for the time being, if that's your question.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, yeah, either we have it and make it,
Yeah.
you know, more robust, or we, we put it on hold. And I'm, I'm okay with putting it on hold for now.
I'm just clarifying that you said it's, you are limiting each committee to two board members?
Two or three.
Two or three.
Two or three.
I think, though, one thing I like about special committees is they can have a short-term purpose. So I think I like the idea if we are going to keep, strategic plan is kind of the same thing, we are in a strategic planning process, so you have to see what is the purpose of that, what would it be? How do we continue a strategic plan among a pandemic, or do we? Maybe that's the question that that committee tackles for PR. It might be more specific to COVID-related communication. How can we best communicate to our parents and staff during this time?
And I, I think it's important at this time that we work on that. It's, it's transparency, big word now that's like in all our neighborhood, so I think it's a, it's something to make more, more robust.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree at all, I'm just looking at, I mean, if they're your committees, Kevin, do you have the capacity to facilitate these? And, and if the answer is no, then, and even if it's a superintendent committee, can someone else be assigned to be the chair in some way? So that if we assign a PR committee, someone else chairs it so that Kevin isn't left holding the ball on it entirely.
Well, I think that's where, that's why I was thinking of creating that calendar, because that helps me then, you know, if it's on the calendar, you know, when it's coming up, you know, it helps to, you know, facilitate those things.
Okay. If you're good, I'm good.
So if, if it's a, there's room on the facilities committee for one or two more, one on the finance, one on the policy. Why don't we do the standing board committees first? And I think strategic, the strategic committee is really, is that a larger group and you just want to make sure that there are board members that attend the meetings that you have with the larger group? Or is it a, you know, a specific, like, just a meeting with board members about strategic planning?
Initially, it's the larger group as we develop the plan. Going forward then, periodically, meeting with the board representatives on the data for the various metrics. And then prior to, again, a board meeting and having a full, full discussion.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful if we, once we have the plan in place, having those periodic check-ins with the, the committee.
Okay. All right, volunteer, volunteers for strategic planning.
I'd be happy to go with that, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Jennifer?
Jess.
Okay.
Jess.
And?
Adina, where you should be.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
I want to join all the committees.
I know, I know, Dana, I looked at you, like, I know both of us are like, sit on your hands, sit on your hands.
Don't do it.
I think there's an option, I mean, if, if the committee meeting rolls around, there's two members on it and somebody wants to sit in on it, I think there's, there's not really.
Don't sit in on a meeting whenever you want to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, and does anyone want to join facilities committee? You would be with Gary.
I'll join facilities.
Okay. Okay, that gives us two on, on strategic, facilities, finance, and policy. And public relations, do we want to let that stay? Or do, or do we want to get it on the calendar and I?
Kevin, it's your committee, so what do you want to do?
I think it would be good to keep it in place.
Okay.
I'd like to join PR.
I would.
Dana?
And Adina.
And Adina?
Then I'm going to back away slowly.
I don't have you mark, I don't have you, I don't have you marked down on that, so. All right.
That wasn't very slow.
Okay, here's what I have, strategic is Jessica and Adina, facilities is Gary and Leah, finance, Gary and Dana, and policy, Joel and Laura, public relations, Dana and Adina. Okay? All right, we'll go with that and if there's any changes, we can always amend it down the road.
Kevin, how, what's next as far as, are you going to create the schedule of meetings? Or how will the next steps work?
Yeah, I'm going to, like I said, I'm going to look at the calendar, the board calendar and start to put in those dates and then I'll share with the board and. and start to put in those dates, and then I'll share with the board. And, you know, typically, other than Tuesday nights, most of the time, my schedule, I'm pretty flexible. And I know some people might be able to meet morning, some evening, it depends. But with the committee members, then I'll be able to finalize those dates and things. But I'll do a first draft of it.
Well, I will say the calendar will definitely help me, because if I know a meeting is two months out, I can block my schedule.
Oh, yeah.
Huge.
Well, that way, too, nobody's scrambling trying to,
Correct.
you know.
Okay, any other comments, questions on the board committees? Okay, then we'll move forward with the presentation of monthly financial statements.
I'm gonna spend a couple extra minutes because of the new board members, and then please feel free at another point in time to call me, and we can go over the financials and things like that. So we'll start first with the comparison, the budget comparison report. So what that is, is we look at the revenues and expenditures by fund, so, and the major, the major funds, the education, the O and M, which also has, we put in life safety as well, and impact fees in there, and then the transportation fund, and look at the revenues, and then the expenditures, and look at the last three years' history, and then the current history, and then have a three-year average. So that, I look at to make sure, like, our revenues and expenditures seem reasonable, and how they compare to the prior years. If they're off, why might that be? So that's what that first report is. Then the budget evaluation, so that's where I kind of go through and tell you what's happened for the month, and maybe where we at, why things might look different from one year to the next. So we'll start out, as of month of May, we received $353,000 from the state. So we receive money for grants and for our evidence-based funding. And so that's what that money is for, that we receive from the state. So there's $307,000 of fiscal year 20 payments that were vouched, but not released. So the state has given us like an IOU and said, hey, we owe you this money, but the treasurer has not processed those EFT transfers yet. So the state owes the district for the third quarter mandated categoricals. We received the first installment of the 2019 property tax levy in the amount of $234,000, which is point zero nine, or 0.95% of the levy. So last year, we received 2.21% of the levy. We anticipated that this first payment would probably be lower, again, because of the COVID-19 things, and people maybe having lost their jobs and not making their tax payments early. So again, historically, the district had not received tax payments in May. So this is the third year that we've received them, and so that appears to be the new trend. So that happened when they changed some of the legislation with property taxes, and whether they were deductible or not. And so people had made early payments. We weren't sure if that was gonna continue. So this is the third year in a row that that has happened. And then obviously, you know, during the month of May, we continued with the stay-at-home order, the shutdown of major sectors of the economy, the operation of only essential services as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Obviously, unemployment continued to grow, turmoil in the financial markets, and the financial position of the state is of concern, and still is of concern. Revenues, and this is where, if you look at that budget comparison report, revenues are comparable to the prior-year averages for the education and tort funds. We received $218,000 of fiscal year 20 payments, and $120,000 of that is our evidence-based funding. So that's like the flat amount that we get from the state. It used to be what was considered general state aid, but that's basically our per pupil funding that we receive from the state. And there are $171,000 of fiscal year 20 payments vouched, but they have not been paid to the district at this time. And then revenues in the O and M fund are comparable to the prior years. In the transportation fund, revenues fluctuate from year to year, and you can see that the percentage of revenue receipts vary greatly over the different years. It's based on the timing of state payments. Sometimes the state is very far behind in sending those transportations. Some years, they've caught up, and so it just, it really, it varies all over the place. So we did receive $135,000 of our, so it was a second mandated categorical during the month. They still, state still owes us for the third quarter in the amount of $135,000. And then as far as expenditures go, in the ed and tort funds, they're comparable to the prior-year average. You can see very little fluctuation from year to year. In the O and M fund, again, that varies quite a bit based on the type of projects we do and things like that. You know, we had a little bit less overtime during the month of May and things like that with the stay-at-home order. There weren't rentals and things and other activities going on in the buildings. And then even our ability to do some projects was limited as a result. So in the O and M fund, we're 75.72% spent to date. Last year, we were 79.92% spent. And in the transportation fund, expenditures are higher than the prior-year averages. Again, sometimes, this is based on the receipt of invoices from our transportation providers. They can vary greatly, especially some of our special ed bills and some of our taxi bills that we get. Sometimes we receive transportation invoices from other districts where we share the cost of transporting our McKinney-Vento students. So that can change quite a bit. We also, our spending is gonna be skewed for the year anyway because of the COVID-19 shutdown, because we adjusted, we had less spending for certain things like athletics and our regular ed transportation. We did enter into an amendment with our regular ed provider to pay for some of the expenses. We did not come to that same agreement with our special ed provider. Our special ed costs were just, were higher than we had anticipated when we built the budget anyway, so that's why we're at that 85% spent. So that one can change a lot, and again, depending upon where some of our students are placed and things like that. So that's those two reports. Then there's student activity report. So those are all the clubs and the different athletic organizations and things like that that happen through the different schools. It's organized by school, and it just shows the spending for the year-to-date for those different clubs and activities. Then we have the statement of position, which gives a picture of our assets and liabilities for the year. Our fund balance shows us where we are in terms for the overall year. So you see at the, at May, we had a beginning fund balance at July 1 of $19.9 million. As of the end of May, our ending fund balance is $10.3 million overall. That's typical because we receive most of our, all of our revenue, the majority of our revenue is tax revenue. We start receiving that for the year. So we start receiving in May, we get a little bit in June, we get some more in July, August, and then pretty much by the end of September, we have the majority of our tax revenue. So we get the majority of our revenue at the beginning of the year, and that's the money that we have to spend over the course of, of the year. And so that's why you'll see higher fund balances at the beginning of the fiscal year versus toward the end. That's normal. You'll see this go back up. At the end of June, this will pop up because we will have received tax revenue. So. And then there's an investment schedule that's also attached, and that just tells you the different balances that we have in different funds out there. Some are designated for specific purposes. So we have $9.8 million of our money invested earning interest for the district. And we earned $308,000 of interest through the end of May, which was nice because interest rates were better than I had projected, so that's great. You won't see that kind of investment earnings for fiscal year '21 because rates are pretty much near zero. So. And then typically, we have a lunch report, but Francesca does the May and June combined, so we'll have that at the next board meeting. Does anybody have questions?
Are most of our placements remote right now?
The private placements? Yes.
So we are, expenditures for transportation for those placements are pretty high generally.
Yes.
So that, so we, I would expect that those transportation costs, I mean, obviously, we're still paying tuition towards those private placements, but the tuition cost, at least for this month.
The tuition comes out of the ed fund.
Yep.
And then, but our, and it was in the board update, our transportation providers have come back to us, and they are looking for some form of compensation. So I'll be bringing that to you at a future point, just decide if that's something that we want to do.
Is that?
Similar to what last year, where we had the amendments to the contract.
So this is not just our bus companies, but our private taxis and things like that?
Do the bus companies right now have done that. But the majority of our special ed students are transported by Sunrise.
Okay.
So it is one of our bus companies.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
A couple items in my report. First of all, thank you to the administrative team, all of our staff, and our school community. Definitely, this is a challenging time for school, and everybody's efforts and everybody working together has been, allowed us to get off to a good start, and so I appreciate everybody's efforts. Again, the school year opened on August 17th, and we had one week of staff development for our teachers. And I referenced this earlier, when we welcomed our new staff, it wasn't our typical start where we had everybody in the auditorium. But we were doing a lot of Zoom meetings in order to provide the staff development. And then our first student, day of student attendance was yesterday, August 24th. We'll start remotely, and we will continue, you know, refine our remote learning plan, monitor it, and then at our next board meeting, I will have enrollment data and then also the student engagement data after we've been doing it for a couple weeks. So I'll have that information for the board at our next meeting. That's my report.
Are there any board reports today?
I would just like to say a huge hats off to all of our administration team and our teachers, all, every single one of our staff, every single parent, and every single student. It's been a really difficult time for all of us, and we really appreciate and thinking of everyone and appreciate your hard work. I know these, the staff are trying so hard to keep our students engaged, and we really appreciate everyone coming together. I especially appreciate also the alliance or the relationship that Kevin, you worked to develop with the Park District to improve childcare. I appreciate our PTOs that have gone above and beyond in helping create grade-level groups for parents to quickly communicate information to each other at the junior high and the elementary level, and we'll get through this together.
Yeah, I want to also say, as kind of an echo to Dana's thoughts, I just, it's been very moving to see how the community has come together, the school community, parents, everybody involved. I think there has been a lot of opportunity for negativity, and what I have seen rise to the top in most occasions is positivity and a sense of, a real, true sense of community. And I just commend all of the administration and our parents and the rest of the community for having that come together. I mean, I'd be missing something if I didn't acknowledge that obviously there has been some frustration and anger in the community. And I would just encourage people who are frustrated and angry to realize that we all are frustrated and angry, and know that, that there's a, make sure that your anger is placed in the right direction. And I would say that, that is definitely not placing it towards our administration and our teachers and any staff. They are working tirelessly and doing everything they can to make sure that this, this very unique situation is a success. So, you know, look towards the Illinois Department of Public Health, or the state, or somewhere else, because I just feel like we need to continue what I've seen primarily, which is the vibe of support and the vibe of stronger together, and we, and we really are doing that. So thank you, Kevin, to you and your staff for everything you are doing to all of the teachers and to the parents in the community. And I just would encourage you to continue to encourage everyone to be supportive of all of the efforts.
Yeah, I just want a special shout-out to those elementary teams, because they're, they're killing it. Like, I just, I can't imagine how challenging it is to keep a kindergartner on Zoom. Or I can, because I have been, but Max just gets this look on his face. And like, the teachers, especially when I think of the kindergarten group that is really coming together with brand-new teachers, and, and so many new faces, they're just, they're killing it. Like, they really are. And Max stays engaged, and he's the king of non-engagement. And getting to see all of his teachers in different faces every morning has been amazing, and the communication has been really exceptional. I've gotten answers at 9:30 at night, which is amazing. And, you know, on the Manning side, getting to see Duncan's face light up when he got in car line and got to wave at Ms. Peter Zach and got this silly goofy grin on his face. And all of that stuff is all the heartwarming things that start the school year. A different school year, but the heart warms the same. So special shout-out, and thank you. Yeah.
I would just like to just do one more thing, is just in response to our public comment today, I'd just like to add an agenda item for next meeting, just so we can explore the concerns, some facts and some background surrounding the band. I wasn't aware of the concern, so I think I'd love a discussion item for next agenda so we can explore that in response to the public comment.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Anything else? Okay, any public comment? Okay, moving on to future meetings and events. We have Westmont Junior High School Back-to-School Night, which will be held in the parking lot September 1st at 6:00 PM. And then they have an alternate arraignment date of September 9th. I'm assuming 6:00 PM as well. Westmont Junior High School Picture Day, which will be held in the gym September 1st at 5:00 PM. Westmont High School Open House, which will be a virtual open house, September 2nd at 6:30. Manning Elementary School Curriculum Night, which will be virtual, September 3rd at 6:00 PM. There'll be no school on Labor Day, Monday, September 7th. Miller Elementary School Virtual Curriculum Night, Miller Elementary School Virtual Curriculum Night will be September 8th at 6:00 PM, and our next school board meeting will be September 8th at 7:00 PM. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss collective bargaining, sale and lease of property, and personnel issues.
So moved.
Did we get a second?
Second.
Yep.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Scoyle?
Yes.
Ms. Romyr?
Yes.
And there'll be no action after closed.